Have a question about a specific topic. There's one on there on eminent domain. There's one on residential treatment facilities. If you've got one of those things, a hot thing burning for your planning commission, that would be a great resource to go into, play that prior to the meeting so we keep everybody straight on where we're supposed to be, what line, side of the line we're supposed to stay on. And today Elliot's going to talk about the role of the planning commission. And just judging from the response to people that have signed up and expressed, emailed and called on that, this is a topic that's got everybody's interest. So without further ado, we'll turn the time over to Elliot Lawrence. Elliot?
Well, thank you and welcome. Hopefully this will be something that's informative for everyone. Like Jason said, I'm an attorney at the Office of the Property Rights Department. And prior to that, I was an assistant city attorney. And my duties included planning and zoning. And so I was the advisor to the planning committee. And so I have a fair bit of background with the planning process. And just to illustrate how a planning commission can be helpful, is useful, the planning commission that I worked with, a developer brought in a proposal for, it was townhomes. If you're familiar, townhomes are usually, it's actually condominium style, but there's usually a group of homes in one building. And they brought this proposal in and it was basically a rectangular block painted white with eight units just lined up, the doors lined up. And it might as well have been built out of Lego. It was just, like I said, a rectangular box painted white with a black roof. And they brought this proposal to the planning commission and explained what it was and they finished their presentation and there's this kind of long pause. And finally, one of the men on the planning commission, he looked at it and thought, "That looks like the barracks they put the year when I was in the army." And that, he basically expressed what most of the other commissioners were thinking, that this is a, basically it was a pretty boring design. And because of that observation that we made, the developer came back and fixed it up a little bit so it looked a little bit better, added some exterior design elements, I think they call them, and also broke it up so it wasn't just a square box, it had a little bit of variety. But that's just to illustrate what a planning commission can do. And I guess that's the first, our first stop is what exactly is a planning commission and why does it need that? And the first simple question is, you need to have a planning commission if you're going to do any kind of zoning regulation. State law requires, the Utah code requires that if you're going to do zoning regulation, that you have a planning commission. And there's a great advantage to a planning commission because the overall purpose, the reason we have them is the planning, zoning and the development, that process and the regulation is very complicated, but it is also very important. It is one of the most important functions of a local government. And because of that importance and because of the complexity, a planning commission is needed because it helps take away some of the burden off of the city council. So a planning commission is an advisory board that specializes in the planning and zoning aspect. And so that frees up the city council to work on other aspects or the other things necessary for a city government. Now, so how do we create a planning commission? Obviously, most planning commissions are appointed. I know there are some examples with township where the commissioners are elected, but most of the time commissioners are appointed. And again, there's a strength of the planning mission is that you can recruit members that want to be on the board, but just, they don't want to worry about the election process. Not everyone wants to run for city council, but there are a lot of people that want to serve. So you can recruit the people that want to be part of the city, that want to contribute, and you can also recruit people that have specific expertise. It's fairly common that planning commission members include business owners, sometimes even someone that's involved in the construction or development process. So they bring that perspective to the commission. So, and again, this is important, the important role and the primary role of a planning commission is to be an advisory board, an advisory body to the city council or county commission on planning and zoning. And so to that end, the planning commission reviews the general plan and any changes to the general plan. They also review and recommend on any zoning changes for property and any proposed ordinance or ordinance changes, and they make a recommendation based on that. Now, the legislative body, the city council or the county commission, they are not obligated to accept the recommendation and they can alter that. But they should and hopefully will listen to the planning commission. And again, this is one of my work stories, as we like to call them. The city I was working for had a deal, a situation with a particular gentleman that even though he had been told on Duberit's occasion that he could not do this, he built a garage without a building permit and in stark violation of the local zoning ordinances. And he went through every appeal that he could possibly go through and he lost. And frankly, he should have because he was pretty flagrantly defiant in the city. He had a friend, however, was on the city council. And so this fellow on the city council, he tried to, he proposed a change in city ordinance that would have made this garage legal, I guess. And the language was just, it was just strange language and it was applied to a particular, it just applied to this particular situation. But he proposed this language and went to the city council, the planning commission because it was a zoning change. The planning commission, they held the, their public hearing and they went over it. At the end of the hearing, they said, "We do not recommend this. This is not good for the city and it's not necessary." And so their recommendation was negative. And unfortunately, this particular city council member got a little upset that the planning commission would question his judgment, but they were performing their goal and as an advisory body of saying, "This is what we feel is best for the city." And that actually brings to another, well, another aspect of planning and zoning. What you have is an intersection of different interests and one of those is the policy. As far as planning and overseeing the development of a community is important because it's how we allocate the resource to the community, it's how we encourage the economic development of a community and the overall well-being. So we have a policy component. We also have a legal component. There are laws that come into play and important laws to protect property rights and oversee development. So we can't ignore the legal aspect of this process. And then finally, we can't ignore the political aspect. This is very important, very important to people. In addition to my escapades with the local government, I also, for a short period of time, I did criminal defense and did criminal law, defense of law enforcement. And I have seen people be sent to prison. In one case, it was this man would be, he would be sent to prison for at least 20 years and he was in his 60s, so in all likelihood, it would be, he would die at prison. And these people, they would just kind of shrug their shoulders, "Okay, I'm going to prison." But then I would go to the planning commission and there would be any kind of property and the room would be filled with people and emotions were high, it would be yelling and name-calling. And so this is a very important, very important political aspect of, you know, planning commission. Planning and zoning is something that gets, it gets people out of bed, it gets people out of their house. Just a few months ago, I did a conference and the fellow who was speaking was a city official and they had recently, the city had approved, it was actually, not only approved, it was actually a partner, the development of, yeah, a very large development as part of their city. And it was, they had gone to Great Lakes to make this as nice as possible to bring in new development, new businesses, new housing. And they had really worked hard with, with the community and they had dozens of meetings and public hearings, taken public comments. Well, the final plan that they approved was not popular, I guess, with an element of the city. And so these citizens started a petition drive and put down the ballot and got this, this proposal basically overturned. They killed this whole development. And the fellow was speaking at the conference and talking about it and a group of these citizens had come to the same conference and they're in the background, they're to the back of the room, they're yelling, "You wouldn't listen to us, you wouldn't listen to us." And this guy, he worked for the city, he just kind of had the greatest theme and they, we had literally dozens of public hearings and we sought comment from everybody involved, but the people were in the background yelling at him, you know, the city had done this without listening to the public and the city had. And so that's another thing to remember is that disagreeing doesn't mean that you didn't listen. Sometimes you have to make a decision and sometimes that decision isn't popular. So that's the primary, primary role of the planning commission as an advisory board, is to have expertise in the planning and zoning process and provide advice and leadership to the local government on this important, important aspect of the local government's role. Another aspect or another role of the planning commission is as land use authority. The planning commission is required by the Utah code, but the Utah code doesn't give a lot of guidance on what a planning commission does or how it does its work. It just says that you have to have a planning commission. The specifics of a, the specifics of the commission's authority is left up to local ordinance, even the size of a planning commission. It can be, I believe the general number is probably seven, but it could be five or I guess any number that's defined by the ordinance, the local ordinance. And the same, the same thing goes for the authority of a planning commission to approve applications. And that would be the commission's role as a land use authority. And typically, planning commissions do, they have an approval role in subdivisions and even specific developments and probably most commonly is a role over conditional use applications. And I wanted to touch on the conditional use process because that's, in our office, we're seeing a lot of calls and questions about the conditional use and what we're seeing, well, put it politely, local government needs to take a good, good hard look at what they're doing with conditional use permits. And maybe need to take a look at improving the process. Now, as you should know, a conditional use is a particular land use that has impacts or potential problems that, that need to be looked at or addressed more specifically. So it's basically, it just needs a little more attention to these types of uses. And local governments are authorized to have conditional uses, obviously, but there is four steps or four parts to the conditional use process. Number one, the use has to be designated as conditional in the land use ordinances. Use is not conditional because someone thinks there might be a problem. The ordinance has to say, "This is a conditional use." It's actually just been the last few weeks, there's a town in Salt Lake County where, it was in a newspaper and they, a company had proposed a plasma center. And it's basically where you sell your blood, maybe you've heard about that or you see, you hear about it TV sometimes. It's a plasma center where people go, they donate their blood and they get paid for it. Anyway, this company had proposed this facility in the town and the neighbors got all up in arms and all excited about it and they demanded, demanded that the city do something. And the problem was that this use is a permitted use. So the decision has been made that that type of facility is acceptable in this community. So the city has, can no longer do it, any, they can't treat it as a conditional use. So the use has to be designated as conditional in the city's ordinances. And along with that designation, standards have to be adopted. These standards are what's used to guide decisions on a conditional use. The way we look at it, and again, the, this is from the Utah code and again, not a lot of guidance on how it's supposed to play out or how it's supposed to be done. Our office, the approach that we take is the conditional use has specific impacts or problems and the conditions that are applied are the way to solve that problem and the standards are what we use to guide the types of conditions that are imposed. And the, this is the, this is where the one problem with conditional uses arise. Traditionally, there's been a conditional use and the language it's used, and I've seen it over and over and over again, is the conditional use can be approved if it's compatible with the neighborhood. And we see that in ordinance after ordinance and even, and still seeing it. That's not a standard. The problem is that compatible with the neighborhood means whatever you want it to We understand the motivation behind it, but it's not really a standard. A standard should be something that you can point to and measure. Doesn't necessarily have to be a numerical standard, although that's certainly a possibility, but it should be something that you can point to as an objective, an objective standard. Just as an example, I, and I was involved in this, although it was a, it's a concrete plant and it was fairly close to a residential neighborhood. And it was actually, it was a conditional use. And the residents were complaining about the noise that were coming, was coming from this plant, particularly at night. And so we had to make the decision, how much noise is too much noise? There are actually stats, there's, you can, you can actually measure sound. But the question is, how much noise is too much noise from this plant? And I actually was sent out in the, at 10 o'clock at night to see how loud this place was. And I went to this neighborhood and walked around and tried to listen to the plant. To be honest with you, I couldn't hear anything unusual. You know, it is, yes, it was residential neighborhood, I really couldn't hear anything that I would consider, you know, too much noise. So you have to either adopt a, some sort of number or at least something that you can point to and say, "All right, this is the noise that we will allow." And understanding that it can vary by a different time. During the day, it would probably be acceptable to have a little louder activity, but at night, you want it to be quiet. So again, the standard is just something that, I guess the way to look at it is every application should be measured with the same yelp score, put it as a metaphor. So that you're not leading it up to the whim of any individual person or a planning commission of just what they, what they like or don't like. The closer you get to the problem, a situation where the decision comes down to basically the personal feelings of any, any individual or the personal feelings of a board, you're going to get into problems. But if you can point to, "All right, we are applying this condition because we're concerned about the noise coming from this facility," now you're okay. Because even if you don't point to a specific number, you can point to, you know, this is the noise that we can, that we find acceptable. And you can base it on your own experience. The idea is that everybody gets treated the same way. Another, and actually got this call in our office, this particular development, the ordinance required that the fencing between the properties, that all, all of the neighbors approved the fencing. And that's okay, there's nothing wrong with that, actually, probably a good idea. You know, the neighbors have to live with each other. But in this particular situation, these neighbors didn't get along and the neighbor didn't want this particular development coming in, so he refused to approve or fall off on the fencing. And the way the ordinance was written, what the language required is that the development could not be approved without the neighbor's approval of the fencing. And again, there's nothing wrong with the idea, it's just that, what the problem is is that you've given the neighbor a veto over any new development. And our recommendation on that is it's okay to seek the input from neighboring property owners on things like fencing and other aspects, but you can't make the development depend on that approval. And so it comes down to, you have to get to the point where the city or the county accepts the fencing, under the circumstances that that fencing is reasonable. Not loud enough. But, sorry about the sound. Anyway, that the, at some point, the city can accept the, whatever standard of the fencing or whatever, even if the neighbor is going to hold out and doesn't agree, it comes down to the city can step in, I keep saying city, but it's also county, they can step in and say, "This is acceptable," and then they can move on with the development. And back to conditional uses, the next aspect after adopting standards and the standards have to be referenced in an ordinance, but after the standards are adopted, then the detrimental impacts of that application have to be identified and evaluated. And from that, it's not just the detrimental impact that might be associated with that particular use. Earlier, we were talking about, you know, concrete plants. It's not enough to say, you know, concrete plants make noise and concrete plants generate dust. So, well, yeah, as a rule, they do. But the impact has to be associated with that application. And so you would, and go to, considering the conditional use, you would say, you know, our concern is this, this concrete plant is going to make too much noise, you know, the way it's situated, it's close to a residential neighborhood, we're concerned about the noise. So the impacts have to be associated with that particular use, not a general, not in general to that type of use, but to a particular use. And then finally, the final aspect of conditional uses is that conditions are proposed to address the detrimental impacts. And again, this is why we're focusing on the specific application. So again, using our concrete plant as an example, the concern is a concrete plant makes too much noise. So how would we address that? Well, maybe a wall around the plant property or landscaping. Operating hours, say that the plant can't operate at night, late at night because it would disturb the, you know, the residential area. So those are the conditions that you would apply to that specific application. And then finally, bear in mind, and this is state law, a conditional use may not be denied. It may not be denied unless you can show that the detrimental impacts cannot be mitigated through conditions. So even if the neighbors show up and are completely up in arms about this concrete plant, if you can show that the noise problems can be reduced or mitigated through any one of the conditions that we talked about, the, the application cannot be denied. The property owner, the owner of the plant, has the right to have that consideration. And the conditional use can only be denied if it's, if the plant noise cannot be addressed or mitigated through reasonable conditions. So if anyone has questions, oh, we do have some, here we are.
First question we had, is a conditional use permit permanent?
It is in the sense that any land use, any land use permission is permanent. The same as, for example, the house my parents live, they've lived there for 50 something years. The zone that they're in has actually been, it's been re-soared to commercial. And, but the house, the houses and the neighborhood is allowed to stand as, first, I think they're, they would be, I think they're permitted in the commercial zone, but the zoning has changed to commercial. And so the, the understanding is if there's any new development, it would have to be commercially related. So a conditional use permit is as permanent as any other land use application. Now, a permit can be revoked if the, the property owner, if the property owner doesn't comply with the conditions, the permit can be revoked. A permit can also be amended if it's necessary, if the, you discover that there's different problems or maybe something that was anticipated or there's, it's just not working out, the permit can be reopened and revisited and possibly amended to address the problems.
So just a question, just to follow up on that. So if you have, you can revoke a conditional use permit due to the conditions not being met. What if, you know, how, how much leeway would need to be granted to this person if they, you know, say they, say it was a kennel and they, and they were permitted to have 10 dogs and they had 11? To me, that seems like, well, that's, they're not meeting the terms of the condition, the conditional use permit, but how, how much, how much burden is, is there on the land use authority to say, you know, this is, this is an egregious, where they've gone way outside of the conditions of the permit? Does that make sense?
Yeah. And to start off with, what we're talking about now is enforcing, forcing land use ordinances or conditional use permits. And so in enforcement, the government has a wide range of options that it can address. Revoking the permit is one of the options. There could also be other, you know, through, through other enforcement actions. So your situation where there's a, basically- So your your situation where there's a basically a fairly minor violation of the permit. Um, it might be uh as simple as telling them, hey, the the permit only allows you to have ten dogs. Um, and that that doesn't, that doesn't mean approximately ten dogs, it means ten. So it doesn't mean eleven, it means ten. So, um, and actually, uh, going back to the the concrete plant example, it's a it's a real situation. Uh, the conditional use permit for that plant, uh, they weren't, uh, their operating hours, they weren't supposed to operate past the six P M. Um, and the problem is the plant came came and it was, uh, they were working on the I C O theme project. Uh, this is in the nineteen nineties, the I C O theme project that, um, and the one of the their jaws or contract was to build the large trusses for the overpasses, which are very, I mean, are huge. Um, uh, and they pointed out that in order to build these trusses, they had to, they couldn't stop. Uh, they hit, they were uh, the concrete and the the forms and the remarks, the whole design. Um, they couldn't just pack up for the night and go home and start over the next day. Uh, once they started the process, they couldn't stop. So they had to go twenty-four hours. Well, we had to, uh, um, and and they were willing, the the company in fact, uh, realized the the impact they're having on the neighborhood. They were willing to take some steps and they did. They put up some barriers to block the noise. But we had to reopen the conditional use permit to address the uh, the situation where they they were required to run twenty-four hours just because, you know, to do their job. So that's just an example of uh, the permit could be reopened and reopened. Uh, and then in terms of enforcement, it's uh, it's up to the the discretion of the local government of how they want to um, address, uh, you know, a violation. And it would be the same as the violation of any any land use ordinance, not just conditional use, but it would be the same as, um, uh, well, if if the if the kennel that you were talking about, if there were noise problems with the kennel or a or a sanitary problem, that would be addressed through, um, possibly through other land use ordinances. And so you have the uh, the county, I know you, I know the example you're telling me, but um, the county in this situation would have to look at the, how would we address that? Uh, what was the best way to enforce it?
Thank you. Great. Another question that we had um was uh, is this, i- is it mandatory under the state to notice property owners within three hundred feet that uh, there would be a condition, uh, meeting on a per conditional use permit?
Um, that's probably something that's in a local ordinance rather than state law. Um, the state code provides that uh, uh, provides notice requirements for any type of um meetings and uh, the the action. Uh, the three hundred foot rule, um, I, what I'm gonna say is the the notice rules are actually pretty, pretty well spelled out. And so you should follow whatever rule uh you have between the state law and also the local ordinance. You should follow whatever rule, rules there are. Um, I don't want to get into specific situations because uh, there there's uh, there there's so many different variations of a local level. But uh, I guess the answer to that is, um, the the notice rules are are spelled out quite clearly. So follow, follow the rule that uh, would apply.
Okay. Great. Next question. Um, an assisted living center has received a conditional use permit and built the center. A couple of years later, they would like to add on to the building. Uh, do they need to submit for another conditional use permit?
Uh, again, it depends on the local ordinance. Uh, but it might be, uh, if it's necessary, uh, you may have to reopen the permit. Um, and it, I guess, depending on what the permit says and then also what the ordinance says. Uh, if if the conditional use permit was for a certain number of units, um, then in all likelihood, you should probably reopen the permit and consider increasing the number of units. But um, if if that's allowed by the ordinance, remember, we we have the zoning ordinance is also going to be in play here too.
Okay. Um, we've got a lot of, a lot of questions. Um, question is, how much do we lean towards an existing land use versus new land use? Uh, for example, stockyard versus new homes? Not, not exactly sure what they're, what is is being asked here, but maybe, maybe the weight, the value of of one use over, over another?
Well, um, I guess, uh, maybe the answer to that is, uh, it's just, it's the old adage, the only thing that's changed. Uh, I mentioned my uh, parents', uh, their house, and when I was growing up, um, we uh, we had cows, we had cattle uh, in back of our house. And um, I remember my sister was in high school and she mortified with the whole butt out in the front yard where her friends were over. Uh, that's, that's how close they were. Um, and uh, several years ago, a lo- a long time ago, we tore the corrals down and um, there actually really wasn't a single bit that was sort of uh, uh, disappeared, I think, one piece at a time. So the cows were no longer there. Uh, because of zoning changes, uh, we can't have animals on the property anymore. Uh, that changed. So, uh, I think that the answer to your question is there, there isn't a legal uh requirement that you choose one land over another. Um, the answer to that is it's really a policy question. Um, you know, things change. Uh, one, one of my, uh, I kept telling you personally, sorry. Uh, one of my ancestors, when uh, he immigrated to Salt Lake, he had a farm. And uh, that property or uh, part of that property is now where the city county building stands. It was on Fourth South and State, or yeah, Fourth South and State in Salt Lake, and that's where he settled when he first uh, came to Utah. Um, that doesn't mean I can show up and say, tear that uh, tear that building down, I'm gonna slice and form. Um, but uh, uh, things change, so it's really a policy question. Um, what, what is best for uh, the city, for your town, for the county? Uh, what, what's the best fit for this uh, uh, for that area? Uh, and that kind of touches on, um, uh, one thing that uh, we've noticed working with local governments is that uh, it seems a lot of times the local government is afraid to say no. Uh, now, there is a lot of bluster that is thrown out and property owners do have legal rights. Uh, but local governments also have legal authority to regulate land. And so they can't say no, or they can't put conditions on uh, land development. Uh, they can also pass ordinances that control what is done or not done in a, in a particular area. So it's really more of a policy question rather than a legal question.
Okay. You want to take one more question?
Sure.
This one, uh, there's, uh, let's see. Here's a question about privately held open space within a platted subdivision. If a developer designated part of a platted subdivision as open space, uh, yet a previous planning commission let the developer keep the open space as private land and receive tax breaks on the open space for several years. Now, can the developer divide that open space and sell it as residential lots? Also, can the, can the city now require the open space to be deeded to ci- to the city now?
Uh, oh, that's a
That's pretty broad. Sorry.
Well, it's a question that focuses more on uh, uh, the land regulation and and the rights. Um, it it's gonna depend on the situation. Uh, if the, if the open space within the subdivision, if it's, um, uh, if the city allows it. Uh, and uh, we've seen this a lot, especially over the last few years because of the ups and downs of the economy. Uh, uh, we've seen situations where uh, a subdivision was approved. Um, and uh, because of economic conditions, the developers of, in fact, more often than not, uh, a new developer has bought out uh, or taken over the project. Uh, and they come and uh, ask to have the subdivision amended or changed flat. Uh, and that's just to suit uh, economic conditions. So the answer to the question is yes, if uh, the city allows it. Um, and the the process was, I guess, it went through a subdivision amendment, uh, a, a flat amendment to divide what should have been open space. Um, uh, if if there's gonna be taxed, uh, implications, again, that's gonna depend on the specific situation. Uh, the other aspect of the question was, um, can uh, can the city, can the city require for the open space to get be dedicated to the city? And again, the answer to that is yes. Um, it's in fact, it's done, uh, it's quite common, but that's done. Uh, uh, for, if for no other reason, the developers don't want to be saddled with the responsibility. Um, or not necessarily developer, but homeowner, homeowners association. Uh, a lot of times they just don't want the responsibility of the, the open space. Uh, and so yes, it can be dedicated to the city. Um, the, is, and that can be uh, one of the conditions of development. And I don't want to get into too much detail on that, that's a little different topic. But that, uh, actually, uh, why don't you give our office a call? Uh, we can go into that a little more, a little more detail.
Okay.
Any more questions?
That's it. That's what we've gotten now.
Okay. Um, I wanted to talk about also, uh, in fact, what what inspired the presentation in the first place. Um, was uh, uh, the role of the planning commission in terms of its authority and its discretion. Um, a commission can, uh, has a broad authority and it's as an advisory body and as a, to approve land use applications. But that authority is defined by statute and by ordinance. And the planning commission uh, has to act within that authority. Um, uh, I mentioned earlier about we had uh, animals corrals in our, our backyard. Um, they could think about uh, that, uh, that's an example or a metaphor of the uh, uh, it kind of applies to any government body, but to a planning commission. Um, the planning commission's authority is like the corral. They're supposed to stay within that, uh, within the bounds. Um, and when they get out, uh, you know, embarrass my sister among other things, but uh, you can, um, uh, that, uh, well, what, you're not embarrassing anyone, you you may get in trouble, uh, into legal troubles by uh, stepping outside that authority. Um, and just as an example, this is a case that we've uh, dealt with just recently. Um, where it, it was a conditional use uh, approval for uh, building on the slope. And the planning commission ran with that and they basically redefined uh, what they asserted what they thought the ordinance could say. Um, they redefined terms. Um, and one, just uh, quickly tell you the aspect or the circumstances. Uh, in this zone, the city had approved, um, uh, it, within this particular zone, the city had established the, the size limits for homes. Um, and it was, it was based on a formula that it came down to and uh, on this particular lot, uh, the maximum size of the home is three thousand square feet, the floor area. Um, well, the planning commission, uh, because, because they were considering a condition uh, for to build on a slope, uh, they stepped in and said, you know, we think that the um, the three thousand square feet is too much. And in this zone, we think that it should be smaller, it's like the fifteen hundred, they cut it in half. Uh, we think that's, that's more appropriate for this zone. Well, what's the problem with that? Uh, number one, the city council had already adopted an ordinance that allowed this property owner to build a home with three thousand square feet. And no matter how much the planning commission disagreed with that, uh, and no matter how much they thought it was a bad idea, and all, uh, it could present a very uh, intelligent argument that it was a bad idea. The city council had already established what the size is, and it's not the planning commission's job to redefine that. Uh, so that was the, one of the problems we faced with this particular issue. Um, and then, um, and again, this was, uh, it also goes to the, the planning commission's role as the advisor. Uh, I earlier mentioned, uh, this is a gentleman on the city council that won't help him friend. So he was trying to force uh, this particular ordinance through. Um, and we had a, in this, in this situation, actually, the planning commission was quite offended. But uh, you know, they were doing their job. Uh, they felt that uh, the the action, the, the recommendation they gave was in the best interest of the city, and they were basically told, you know, stick it in your ear, we're gonna do whatever we want. So they were actually quite offended. Um, and so I just want to mention that, um, dealing with planning commissions and any boards like this, uh, don't discount the human factor. Uh, these are people that, uh, serving on a planning commission is very important to them. And they want to contribute to the well-being of the city. Um, and in our experience, most people take it very seriously. And so if they make a recommendation and the mayor, the city council, the county commission, you know, tells them, you know, stick it in your ear, we're just gonna ignore it. Uh, you're telling them, yeah, fine, you did your job, but we don't care. You need to, you need to remember the, the human factor that's involved in, it's kind of a politics involved, I know, and sometimes that happens. Um, it's okay to disagree with the recommendation. Uh, but what you should do is respect the work the planning commission has done and respect the recommendation it made. Um, uh, and then also, uh, going with, this goes to uh, the legislative body and the planning commission, is don't forget the staff. Uh, these are people that do this for a living. Uh, and they don't, they know what they're talking about, they know what they're doing. So listen to what the staff says. And again, uh, the commission and the legislative bodies, they're not obligated to follow the staff recommendation, but they should respect it. Um, and and should listen to what the staff does. It's, uh, I don't know if the, if any of you follow sports. Um, and it seems that with almost every team, uh, we use football, but uh, with almost every team, everybody knows what's better for the team than the coaches do. Um, everybody knows that, uh, which quarter box should play for D Y U. And they're, they can't understand why Bronco Mendel Hall doesn't play the guys they want, they want them to play. Uh, obviously, we know a lot more than Bronco Mendel Hall does. Because it's not like he does this every day, and it's not like he's paid to do it, but he does it for a living, you know? It's not like he works with the, all the players on a regular basis and understands their strengths. But we, we obviously know more, but we watch them through weeks. So it's kind of the same role, uh, same thing with the, with the planning staff. Uh, you, you hire them to do a job, but let them do their job and respect and pay attention to what they're saying. Um, you don't have any, take a break here for questions?
No, no more questions right now.
Okay. Um, uh, earlier, I, I actually want to talk about uh, open meetings. Uh, open meetings and records. Uh, a planning commission is a public body. And like any public body, when the planning commission convenes and meets, it is a public meeting. And the public may attend if they want to. Um, so just understand that, that there's no such thing as a non-public planning commission meeting. Um, and I want to stress that because we've actually had, uh, uh, not a whole lot, but we've had a few corrals that have come in where people saying the planning commission told us that wasn't, that wasn't a public meeting, they told us to leave. Um, and in one case, uh, they refused to leave, so the commission met in a, uh, the, the meeting room had windows. Uh, they went in the small meeting room and closed the door, and the people stood outside and walked through the window. Um, uh, don't do that. Uh, if the planning commission is meeting, it's a public meeting. Now, understand that uh, uh, oftentimes, the commission and also the city council and county commissions, uh, they'll have what they call work meeting, uh, where specific applications, uh, they're kind of delved into it much, much more deeply. They kind of roll their sleeves and go through the whole file, go through all the maps and the flats. Um, and it's a work meeting. Uh, they bring the, the applicant to come in to answer questions and focus on that. Uh, there's nothing wrong with that. Uh, it is still, however, a public meeting. And so the public wants to attend and walk, they're welcome to do so. Um, and what we recommend, uh, if that's the situation, uh, what we recommend and suggest is that, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, the, the commission or the commission chair, uh, just explain that this is a work meeting and this is what we're going to do, and we are not taking public comments. Um, if there's going to be a public hearing and public comment, that might be at the next meeting. And just explain that, uh, okay, this is a public meeting and you're welcome to watch what we're doing. But we will be taking public comment at a later date. Um, just a, uh, I guess that comes down to is don't give people a reason to think that there's something fishy going on. Because that's a, we're, and it's not that they call us, like I said, we haven't had a lot of calls. We, um, we hear it, uh, kind of cropping up every, every so often. There's the people come in and say, they're doing something, they're doing something wrong, they're, they're a they're doing something wrong, they're, they're, uh, sneaking behind our backs. Don't give people, uh, the reason to think that you're going behind their back. Uh, another recommendation we, we tell people is that, uh, you know, cities and counties, um, none of them have ever gotten in trouble because they have too many public meetings. Uh, you only get in trouble when there's not enough. So, um, and while we're talking about public comments, um, if any of you, and I know, most of you are working with, uh, local governments, you've dealt with the zoning issue, especially with controversial, uh, issue, um, people are gonna come out of the woodwork, they're gonna pack the city hall, and, and they are gonna be mad or wet hilled about whatever happens. Uh, I've get, I've already given a couple of examples, uh, just here about, you know, a situation where they, you know, the room's just packed, and people were just screaming. Um, you have to listen to the public. Um, it's a messy process, but we involve the public for a reason, they have a right to be heard, and the, it's, we want to encourage it, we want people to show up at the planning meetings and have their say and have an input in, uh, what's going to happen in our city. So, it's good that we have the public, um, it's bad, however, when a decision is based on the excitement, uh, what we call the public clamour. Um, the, uh, example I gave about the planning, where people started, uh, just ballistic over, uh, the, we don't want the drunks and the homeless people and the drug dealers, uh, showing up in our town because they want to sell their blood. Um, that's the, uh, good example of public clamour. Um, uh, one of my favorite stories, and I, I, I was involved in this, um, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the restaurant called Hooters, um, uh, Hooters, it's, it's a restaurant, uh, um, it, it's kind of a sports bar, and it's quite famous for the waitresses are rather scantily clad, um, they wear short shorts and wool cut, uh, t-shirts, I guess. Um, this, this is, uh, the city, what I was working for, uh, they proposed to have a Hooters, uh, in, in the city, and word got out, city hall was packed, and people went up and how terrible it was, and we're setting a bad example for the children, and isn't this horrible, and we finally had to, to stop and have to hand it to the planning commission, the chairman, who's, he knew his stuff, he was experienced in his stuff, and he says, he stopped and says, those are all valid concerns, but our, uh, our evaluation was about the building and the site. Um, he said, in other words, we're focused on the outside of the building, not the inside. He said, those are all valid concerns, and those are something that maybe it should be addressed, but our job today is, we're, we're focusing on the design of the building, parking, uh, traffic impacts, in other words, what's going, what's happening on the outside of the building, not what's happening on the inside. Um, uh, that's a good example, I had to hand it to, uh, you know, the commission chair for pointing that out, um...
Oh, yeah, could I ask you, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna ask a question on, on, as we, uh, as we talk about this communication, we're kind of run, running down on time here, but one thing that, uh, that, uh, is, is something that we hear about from time to time, is this ex parte communication, where, well, hey, I, I know this person's on the planning commission, I'm gonna go and, and corner them and, and talk to them about this issue. Um, could you talk about that a little bit?
Uh, yeah, uh, in fact, uh, it dealt with before, uh, I dealt with, if you remember from the, the beginning, I told the story about the RV barracks, uh, this same guy, uh, was on the planning commission, he came to me, uh, there was a particular, uh, application, it was kind of controversial, and he came to me and he said, I have people come to me, you know, come to my house and stop me in the store, and tell me something that's going on, uh, you know, information about this, uh, this project, and I think it's important information, he said, the problem is they're not showing up at meetings, and so, so what do I do? Um, and I guess the answer to that is, if, you can't ignore the fact that people are bringing the information. Um, if it's, if it's, if the information is, you know, don't build that building, or don't, don't let that plasma center go out because it's gonna affect the children of our community, well, now we're falling into public clamour. But, if a person comes and says, uh, you know, there's a traffic problem, uh, there, you know, this is gonna really affect the traffic flow, well, that's a specific, uh, question, and that's something the planning commission should address. Um, you can't ignore, uh, that information. Um, there, there's different approaches, or maybe different, uh, aspects, or different ways that can be addressed. Uh, one thing is, the planning commission member could bring that up in a work committee, or work, work meeting, or discuss it with the staff, and say, look, uh, I've heard this information, is this something we need to, to talk about, uh, and address it that way? Uh, if it's not brought up in a public hearing, uh, the commission member could also investigate it himself or herself. Uh, for example, if there's a traffic issue, uh, it's, uh, the commissions, uh, members of the commission should visit, uh, property site anyway, uh, when they're considering an application, you know, they should try to visit the site if they can, so maybe he could look at the site and think about the traffic, maybe get some ideas, uh, and then bring that up on his own. Um, it, I, I guess another aspect of your, your concern is if the applicant talks to an individual member of the planning commission. Um, uh, this really goes to the ethical role, uh, of a planning commission in, in any, uh, public board, city, you know, city council, county commission. Um, the, I guess the, the need to politely tell the person, look, I am on the planning commission, and I have a, you know, authority or a, a role to play, um, if you want to have, if you have something to say, or if it's something that you feel is important to say, come to the meeting and, uh, you know, express your opinion, or write it in a letter, and, and express it to the planning commission. Uh, um, it, I guess that you're looking at a situation that can't be avoided, it's just going to happen, um, but there's ways to address it. Um, and, uh, I guess the only recommendation I can give you is that you should err on the side of caution. Um, if you feel that there's information that's important, uh, discuss it with the staff and the other members of the planning commission in an open meeting, uh, this is the information that I have, if you need to postpone a decision, if you feel the information is important, that's okay, uh, but err on the side of caution, and err on the side of having the decisions made in an open and public meeting. And then, uh, we are running out of time, I did want to mention another important aspect that ties in with the meeting, is, uh, uh, the importance of records. Uh, if there's going to be an appeal, uh, there needs to be an accurate record, uh, and the record is all of the documents that have been brought in, and the transcript of the hearings. Um, we just, uh, recently wrapped up our situation, well, uh, uh, approval for this business that they've given, it was nineteen ninety-six, so almost twenty years ago, and there was a kind of vague discussion about whether, whether this business could include storage, uh, on, on their lot, they had a, it's a fairly large lot, uh, and so there's just a couple of vague references to storage on the property, um, and that, that's all the record they had. Um, and now, here we are twenty years later, um, and unfortunately, none of us, or, I was involved in it, uh, we, none of us were there in nineteen ninety-six, we don't know what they were thinking, uh, what, it appears that everybody that was at the meeting twenty years ago understood, or at least had an idea of what was going on with the public, now nobody does. So, especially in, uh, the approvals that are given, uh, it should be specific, and it should spell out, uh, what is, what is and isn't allowed, um, and so, you don't have this question that pops up ten or twenty years later saying, well, can I do this? And, the, twenty years ago, the planning commission said something about storage, and we're not sure what they meant or what they were talking about, but, does that mean I can store stuff on my property, or is that what you didn't tell me, I can't store stuff on my property? So, uh, just, uh, that's the importance of having, uh, the records be accurate, and accurately reflect what the planning commission and, uh, city council and county commission, uh, what they are approving for land use. Uh, you have any more questions?
Yeah, we've got a couple of questions as we, as we wrap up our time here. One, uh, one of the questions is, uh, what if there are two conflicting ordinances on the books? Can the planning commission decide which of the ordinances to apply to the particular permit?
Um, uh, if that's the case, you need to look at your ordinances, first of all, um, uh, by conflict, I guess that, that, what do you mean by conflict, is this?
Doesn't, doesn't give any more specifics to, to exactly what those are, but I, I, the idea I get from the question is, is you've got two kind of diametrically opposed ordinances, maybe one that was, that was forgotten, um, from years ago, and, um...
Uh, well, I guess it, if, if that situation crops out, I'm along, um, uh, well, you're, you're gonna have a, well, it can depend on the circumstance, uh, and, and again, I just suggest that you give our office a call, um, maybe we can talk about it in more detail. Um, but ideally, there shouldn't be a conflict. Um, the, uh, and I guess as a general rule, uh, the more specific will control over the more general, uh, and that goes with, um, uh, kind of the ordinance interpretation, uh, you may have to look at what the purposes of the ordinance, uh, what they're trying to accomplish, um, and also bear in mind, uh, you're gonna have to take into account the, the impact on the property right, uh, uh, property order's rights developed, um, how's that going to impact them? Um, and, uh, it possibly, and this is, would be within, it would be within the authority of the local government, uh, possibly pass a temporary ordinance, uh, or, uh, to, to block any development applications until the conflict can be sorted out, uh, that's one, um, uh, that's one approach, I guess.
Okay. Uh, last question, uh, let's see, the last question we have here is, um, can the, can the planning commission make a recommendation that goes against city ordinance on someone that wants to build against a zoning law? Don't it?
No.
Okay. All right.
Uh, again, that, uh, there was an example, probably, the city council had passed, uh, their ordinance that allowed a home of three thousand square feet, and, uh, this planning commission, um, because, uh, they, they were considering a condition used to build on the slope, and they took, uh, took it on themselves to say, we don't like the three thousand square feet, we think it should be smaller, uh, they can't do that. If an ordinance says something to the planning commission, that's, uh, that's the, the bounds of their authority and their discretion, uh, they, 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 they can't go against a, an ordinance or an approval, as far as it's been granted.
Okay. Um, we're, we've run down on time here, um, probably, probably the, um, best thing to do now is, is maybe give out your, uh, contact information, and, and just to, uh, talk about maybe what the services that the ombudsman's office has, uh, has to offer.
Um, we are always happy to take calls and, uh, from local governments and try to help them out. Uh, our phone number is eight oh one, five three oh, six three nine one. Uh, our web address, uh, website is property rights, property rights with an F, uh, dot Utah, U T A H, dot G O V, like government, so propertyrights.utah.gov, there's two dots. Uh, uh, and our website, uh, there's contact information there, you can contact us by email or, or telephone numbers are there, uh, and we also, uh, tried to put a lot of information, uh, on our website, uh, our advisory opinions are all there, uh, for your rousing pleasure, and, uh, along with the other information that we are putting on, and we're al- always trying to improve, and if you have, uh, if you have something that you'd like to see on our website, we'll, we'll, we'll look at the, uh, adding that.
Great. Thank you so much, Elliot, this has been a great presentation, I know it will, it'll spur a lot more questions as we go along, so we really encourage you to, uh, to go out and, and, uh, and talk to, to the ombudsman's office, um, you know, really get involved and, and learn, and learn these things. From the trust, you know, of course, we come from a, from the, the insurance standpoint, we want to prevent losses, um, that may come about from, from these lawsuits and, and that, so we have a, a good partnership with the, with the ombudsman's office, we appreciate their support of, of our webinar programs. Um, if you do have questions, please, uh, please contact the ombudsman's office or myself, my, my email is jason@utahtrust.gov. Um, we will be, uh, we, we're recording this video, and we'll make that available on our website, so you can go back and review that, uh, at a later time, if you, if you choose to do so, uh, and, like I said, we do recommend, if, if there's a specific, specific webinar that you, uh, uh, think your planning commission needs, uh, uh, by all means, go onto our website, maybe, maybe show that, if you've got a, a light agenda, I, I, or a light agenda one night, or, or in a work session, something like that, so you can get this training out to all of those people. Um, thanks again. Any, like, any parting words, Elliot?
Uh, no, just thank you for listening, and, uh, thank you for those questions.
Okay, thanks so much. Appreciate it, everybody, have a great day.
See ya. You're welcome.